Good evening. I call it May 7, 2024, regular scheduled county board of commissioners meeting of order. I've asked Commissioner Hale to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner White, since we're starting good pledge. Y'all please stand.
Lord, we thank you this day. We thank the opportunity to get together to serve our community. Lord, we pray that you'll be with us and help us in our direction in making decisions that are going to be very important about this community and our county. Lord, we pray that you'll watch over this nation, this world. Lord, we pray that you'll protect us and forgive us of our sins, Lord. Lord, most Lord, thank you for your son Jesus Christ and paid the ultimate price for our sins. We pray all this in your name, your holy name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank y'all for coming. We'll get started here. Item number one on the agenda is approval of minutes for the April 16, 2024 regular scheduled meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Hale. All if they were aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Just a question carried from item zero. Next item on the agenda, public concerns and comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak tonight, please come forward.
My name is Roberta Thomas. My address is 12467 State Road 51, Live Oak. I'm actually here because of the last four meeting minutes. Because in those minutes, you said you did not need to address the chicken farming issue. But I live in like a sort of subdivision out there that has deed restrictions on the property. And each realtor, it should be their responsibility, of course, to notify people of those deed restrictions. But there has been a lot cleared right across the street from my house. And I'm afraid that somebody is going to try and use that as agricultural and not as part of that subdivision, which they say cannot be used for agricultural. So I do not think it's something that the board needs to just disregard and not address, that they need to have licenses or make sure that there are no deed restrictions on the properties. Because I didn't buy the house that I live in to live across from a chicken farm.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Morrison, you want to address that particular situation I think she's talking about?
The context in which the chicken houses were brought up in the meeting last week, where there were two, or last meeting, there were two pending applications for installing chicken houses on new, on unreal property, which it hadn't been there before. I had some concerns about the legality of that, so it got pushed to today's meeting. If you look at your amended agenda, you'll see both of those petitions have been withdrawn. So we're not going to, so there's nothing to handle today.
Okay.
We put it on there just so, I'd ask that that remain on the agenda with the, had been withdrawn label, just so people who are following it could understand kind of why we weren't addressing. To answer your question, though, as to, in the general sense, handling chicken houses, certainly if you want to make a statement as to policy, as to what there should or shouldn't be regarding these chicken houses, you're certainly free to do so during the time. I would say, and this isn't me trying to give you a hard time, so please don't hear that.
I understand.
Is if there's an issue with the proposed usage violating a development restriction, that's going to be a private cause of action between the people who live in that development and it, and the proposed property owner. That wouldn't be a county issue. If it otherwise applies with county zoning, then...
But what if it was approved by the county? That's my concern.
Oh, I understand. I certainly understand. And I can't speak as to which chicken house it was. Because all we're going to do on our end is look to make sure that it otherwise applies with our LDRs comprehensive plan. And if it does, it's fine. We're not going to go back and double check everybody's deed restrictions that may or may not, because there's all sorts of things that apply there. That would be a private cause of action between the surrounding homeowners and the proposed user. I'm not saying you're right or wrong. But, and if you're right, you'd absolutely have perfectly valid cause of action to get it to stop.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Boyd. Chairman, my name is Robert Ford, and I reside at 8896 137 Los Live Oak, Florida. Mr. Chairman, permission to approach?
Sure.
Pass out a little sheet to the members.
You want to pass it this way?
Okay. Hey, board members, what you're looking at is a photo of a grave site. And my remarks regarding this grave site, gonna, I have to give you a kind of short story to give you just a little bit leeway to kind of explain, you know, why probably this topic is being discussed. I was born in 1949 in Live Oak, in Dalling Park, Florida. I'm the youngest of 15 children. And I grew up on a little small farm in Dalling Park. And if you believe it or not, we was able to make a living on that small piece of property, basically because we were growing the bappa during that period. In the section of Dalling Park I grew up in, in the 50s and 60s, there was about 12 black families that resided on a small enclave that was called a quarrel. One family that lived right across from me was the McCray family. McCray family, oldest son named was Gus McCray. He and I was the same age. He was the oldest in this family, and I was the youngest of my family, even though he had a couple of small, young siblings. The racial norms of the 50s were such that the social barriers was made clear right from birth. Gus and I were playing buddies as we grew up. At age 12, my dad died. And at 13, my family moved from the farm in Dalling Park into Live Oak on the west side. I quickly made friends in Live Oak. And although Gus and I attended the same school at the Douglas Center, we was not as close as we were when I was living in Dalling Park. In the mid 1960s, 65, 66, his parents separated, and he later moved to Jacksonville with his mother. In my final semester of my senior year in high school, I enlisted in the army on a delayed entry program. This meant that after high school, I had up to 120 days to go on active duty. However, in June 1967, three weeks after high school, at 17 years old, I officially went into the army and started a 26-year military career. From about 1966 to 1992, I completely lost touch with my old childhood friend, Gus McCray. I heard that he had served in the military and the army as well. In 1992, I was nearing the end of my military career. I was stationed at Alexandria, Virginia. One evening out of the blue, I received a phone call from my old childhood friend, Gus McCray. Gus had come across one of my brothers in Jacksonville, who had given him my phone number when he gave me a call. And during my conversation with Gus, he was somewhat evasive and cryptic about what was going on in his life. I told him I was planning on retiring in another year in 93 and moving to the Jacksonville area, and I was planning on reconnecting with him. However, several months later, I heard from a classmate of mine that told me that Gus had passed away. Let's fast forward to 30 years, 2014. I came across Gus's grave site in a rural St. John Baptist Church cemetery in the Neubund community here in Swanee County. That is, that is depicted on that photo that I gave you. Gus was buried next to his dad, Harry McCray, who, who had a VA headstone noting that he was a World War II veteran. Gus, himself a veteran, did not have a VA headstone, only a crude marker showing his date of birth and his date of death was April 6, 1992. I took a picture of Gus's headstone and sent it to our county veteran service officer and asked if he, what he could do to get Gus a VA headstone. Lee Abusol, our county veteran service officer, said that he needed a copy of Gus's DD 214 in order to apply for a VA headstone. Of course, I did not have a copy of Gus's DD 214. He asked for Gus's social security number or his service number. I did not have that. He asked that I have his date of service in the military. I didn't, not have that information as well. He suggested that I contact some of Gus's family members to get as much information as possible to, for him to make the application. To no avail, I was not able to contact any of Gus's family. After a couple of weeks, Lee followed up with me to let me know that he had found some information in an archive verifying Gus's military service. However, the VA still needed a copy of his DD 214 to process a request for a headstone. Lee also advised me that he was going to check with the clerk of the court to see if a copy of this DD 214 was filed there. No such luck. He advised me that he had several other avenues that he was going to pursue to get a copy of Gus's social security number for him to request a copy of his DD 214 from the National Archives. After a couple of weeks, Lee called me and said that he had the application ready for Gus's VA headstone. Only thing I had to do was stop by his office and sign the request. I realized in the grand scheme of things, getting a VA headstone for Gus's grave is somewhat, this somewhat forgotten Vietnam veteran was a very low priority. However, throughout the process, Lee made me feel that if, made me feel as if getting this VA headstone for Gus was his top priority. He could have easily blown me off, because most of the information he needed was my responsibility to provide him. I want to publicly commend Lee Abusol, our veteran service officer, for going beyond the scope of his duty and responsibility to get my old friend Gus McCray his just due VA military headstone. Thank you.
I don't see Mr. Abusol here. I don't see him. Mr. Ford, thank you for that. I was, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for being persistent. And we will certainly give Mr. Abusol a pat on the back when we see him. Thank you.
Good job.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Steve Fontana, 21181144th Street, Live Oak. I'll make it quick, just a quick announcement. A week from Saturday, American Patriots of Live Oak will be hosting a meet and question and answer for candidates for the county board of commissioners that are going to be up for election in the fall. Just, that's it. So it's a week from Saturday, 2:00 PM, right here in City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Welcome, Mr. Beasley.
Thank you, Commissioner, and President. I want you to have a paper for y'all concerned. Try to get, I'm asking y'all to just put your team on y'all's agenda for next month and try to hold it in for the county employees.
Okay.
I know, I know y'all had dinner made up for the season, so that's why I gave it to y'all. Maybe put it on y'all's agenda next month.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Appreciate it.
That would be, to do that, I think would be an action item, so we probably would need to put it on the agenda. Yeah, I think so. Of course, yeah. I've got my, where the new spots, I'm looking the wrong ways. We can put that on the agenda for the next meeting. It'll be discussed. That was your request, right?
Yes, that's my quick. Thank you.
I can do a, a proposed presentation adopted and the event the board decides to do.
Got to do it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can you hear anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
County commissioner.
Welcome, Ms. Seal.
Thank you. I am Nancy Seal. I live at 9886 County Road 136, Live Oak, Florida. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you tonight. Just a few thoughts. I will be brief and to the point. I grew up in a small town in North Mississippi, in Canda, Swanee County, in December 1972. I have lived in Swanee County for most of my adult life. During my 34 years of teaching, I have taught grades ranging from 7th grade all the way down to pre-k. My last 20 years were happily spent in kindergarten, where I was blessed to teach children and grandchildren of the students that I taught back in 73 through 75. Once again, I am very thankful to have had the opportunity to teach in Swanee County in their school district. I have contentedly lived in Dalling Park since 1988. It's a wonderful place to live. My initial retirement plans included a move to the mountains of western North Carolina to be near my three children and grandchildren. I became an Advent Christian Village member several years ago, and that was like putting scrumptious icing on a decadent cake. When the time came to market my house in 2022, I found that I had too much Swanee County sandy soil between my toes, and I could not leave this wonderful place that I called home. During my teaching career, it was my mission to not only to love my students unconditionally, teaching their educational skills that were required for their grade level, but to instill in them character traits and virtues needed for becoming assets to society. My aim was to model what I taught. I was laying the foundation for these precious children to be the best they could be. Our classroom mantra was, "Good choices make good things happen. Bad choices make bad things happen." Those words were an inspiration for decision-making for them and for me, and inspired my children to try to think before they acted. I am concerned about decisions that have been made. In using the words, "Good choices make good things happen. Bad choices make bad things happen." I'm still trying to figure out how the recent votes can be deemed legal and irreversible when done by a process that was deceptive and, to me, seemingly illegal. How can a vote be legally binding when illegal actions occur? Good choices make good things happen. Bad choices make bad things happen. As a longstanding citizen, a proud, longstanding citizen of Swanee County, I am embarrassed and disappointed, but it's not too late to make the right choice. That choice is to reverse the rulings of the RV park in Dalling Park. I'm asking you to make the right choice for the citizens of Swanee County, and especially for District 3. Restore their trust. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Seal. Anyone else from the public wishing? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Melissa Fenimore, 21992, CR 250, Live Oak. I came here for the reason that I oppose your decision with the RV camp right next door to me. I watched four of your commissioners' meeting for YouTube, and I noticed all the items submitted to you were on motion, carried by the sheriff. It's over and over again, except last April 16, for the two items, which is basically was removed or invalidated. That's for the chicken food, for the chicken houses, respectively, 8 and 10 houses. Now, it was tabled because your attorney says so. So you will not, according to him, you will not be legal hot water. Was it tabled because people are watching? Most of the items has no discussion and no question. I wish you gave the Dalling Park community a chance to hear us before you pass the permit. When nobody shows up on March 19, does it say something to you? It's because we are not notified, and now you're telling us that it cannot be revoked or void. Swanee County gave you a very big and enormous power. It's amazing, but without accountability. And that is so sad. You can vote for a permit that could affect hundreds of residents in that area, but you cannot void or revoke it. Mr. Lane says, "Progress is coming." Now, can you call that progress if you're impacting our daily lives? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none of closed, but to come in. We will move along to proclamations and presentations. Item number two on the agenda is presentation of Ford Blue ProShare, Mr. Tyson Johnson and Mr. J.D. Carols of Gallagher Insurance. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Excellent. J.D. Carols and Tyson Johnson of Gallagher Benefit Services. We've come here tonight just to kind of talk about the pro-share agreement that was brokered by Tyson and the return that comes back to you all. We'll start off on the Ford Blue County's history there. That's just presented to you so we can kind of see how your plan's running. There's, kind of see that the premiums paid in versus the claims paid out, you know, this is running well at 75.44%, which is where we want it to be. That means that your claims are not exceeding the amount of money that you're paying in. So that means that your population is fairly healthy. So that's what you want to hear. If you'll move to the next page, this is just a little bit of the renewal history here over the past, over the past 10 years. When you take those numbers and you kind of average them out over the 10 years, it comes out to just about 2% over that timeframe, you know, with the decreases and the increases over there and the flat renewals is there. If you take into account the pro-share agreements that have been funded back to the, to the county over that same timeframe, it comes out to about an even, even increase, or no increase overall. So, excuse me. Allergies are getting me today. So that's kind of just a quick renewal history of where we are and where we came from. Next is the Blue, Ford Blue settlement statement. I'll let Tyson kind of talk through that.
Okay, thank you.
So just kind of really quickly, a pro-share agreement with Ford Blue is nothing more than an agreement that you have with your insurance period, well, under your fully insured health plan, that allows you to earn a percentage of any surplus under the health plan over any given two-year period, over a given two-year period. So if the health plan is running well, meaning the claims are not excessive relative to the premium that's been paid in, and there's a surplus, the county gets to participate in that surplus. On the other hand, if claims were not running well, and the premium, and premium was not sufficient to cover costs, the county wouldn't have any responsibility for making up the deficit. So it's kind of a, a way to participate in the surplus during the good years without having the responsibility of funding any deficits in bad years. Kind of a, little bit of a win-win here. The calculation that you have in front of you is a two-year pro-share agreement, so it goes back from the period beginning October 1 of 2021, running through September 30 of 2023. That's a two-year period. And that mirrors your plan year, which is in line with your fiscal year. So those two, two years, you can see in year one, there was a slight deficit. Year two, there was a fairly healthy surplus. And the total surplus over that two-year period was 300, I don't know if it's on here, $333,000. Your half of that resulted in $166,707 being refunded to the county. That's already taken place. I think that takes place back in February, maybe, something like that. But we just wanted to make the, the board aware that this agreement exists, the benefit that it provides the county. And if you look on the previous page that J.D. had shared with you, you see some of the previous pro-share refunds that have been, that have come back to the county. $150,000, $130,000. Back in 2019, it was $446,000. Then there was a two-year period where there was a fairly healthy deficit. There was no pro-share, but there was also no penalty to the county for running those deficits. And then this most recent two-year period would result in $166,000 and change being refunded to the county. So we're very excited that the county's health plan is running well. Very excited that the county gets to participate in the upside when there's a surplus like there has been the last two years. Looking forward to the next couple of years. You're under a new agreement right now for the two-year period that began last October 1. But very excited about the possibility of the county continuing to earn refunds under that agreement. And to J.D.'s point earlier, if you, if you look back over the last 10 years, the average rate increase was about 2% each year over that 10-year period. Some years a little higher, some years a little lower. But the average over that period is about 2%. The world of health care, that's pretty amazing, because most, I think most people realize that the cost of health insurance and health care is rising at a rate much more rapidly than 2% per year. But the county's plan has been held in check. You all have done a really good job managing that, and we just wanted to commend you for that. And then make you aware of this pro-share agreement over Ford's, completely aware. You fund the health plan each year. I don't know that you're completely aware about pro-share, how it works, so we wanted to come to you and explain that to you. Just let you know, you have $166,707 for that. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to the next item on the agenda. That is item number three, presentation of new video for Swanee County Economic Development, Mr. Jimmy Norris, economic development writer, and Mr. Gerstus Hetzer, marketing coordinator. Welcome, y'all.
It kind of went home, so she's got to load it back to give her the second.
Yes, sir. Why she's going ahead. Y'all want to, hold on. Y'all want to go through? Do they consent agenda? True. Oh, you ready? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hetzer.
Can you hear me off this mic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. She just wants me out of the way, so I'm over here. She didn't want to block y'all's view, so she told me to leave. So the economic development office, each, about every other year, we try to do a new promotional video. We also do tourism in our office. And so it kind of works out that one year we're doing tourism and one year we're doing economic development. This is a project that we actually started, and then we got hit by Hurricane Adelia. So everything got postponed and put off, and, and our original plans all changed. And so we kind of had to pivot on a lot of things that we were going to do. For instance, the state park was, was supposed to be a part of this event. And for you guys that have been at the state park, you know, you can't hardly even walk through there. They're working real hard to get it back up. But, but anyway, we worked with our marketing company to put this event on. And our marketing company, Madden Media, which all of you guys know, you know, they, they do a wonderful job. And we were on the call with them today, and we were talking about the release of the video, because tomorrow it actually goes public. So you'll actually see it being promoted all over the country. And so they wished us good luck, and they want to say thank you to all of you guys, because all of you help, you support. You know, you know them personally, John and Emily and Maureen, the Way Mac crew. But we wanted to be sure, they told us with Commissioner Motley down there, to be sure he got a big shout out for providing a big dinner for them every time they're in town. So Swanee County's finest, and... So Swan County's finest, and I promised them, and Chrisa promised she's going to confirm that. John can only eat red meat, right, once a month. So he saved it for when he comes because he knew Mr. Motley was providing food. So he wanted me to be sure, I told you all that. So anyway, I'll get going. This is the latest video, and I won't explain to you the way it works. We align with the state of Florida on their targeted industry sectors. And for us in Swan County, it's manufacturing, agribusiness, clean tech, transportation, tourism, and retirement services. The first I Am Swan video that we did a couple of years ago featured Ash Grove down in Branford, Gwen Brothers McAlpin, Swan Valley Electric, Matco Industries out at the Catalas site, the Spirit of the Swan Music Park. I thought I saw Rob this one more. There she is. They were in our video. And the Abbot Christian Village, such a beautiful place down there. That represented the retirement services. So within those same guidelines, this video followed suit. And so now we will play the video, and if it's okay, I'm going to kill the center lights a little bit. Is that okay? Just, just the center one, please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Is that okay? Everybody comfortable with that? All right, Ms. Chrisa.
There's a soul of Swan County. It's found in the beautiful, unfiltered landscape and in the camaraderie of a hard-working community. It's in the spirit of neighbors helping neighbors and in the heartbeat of growth and success. While success has many definitions, here it means pride and fulfillment. Supported by our pro-growth, pro-business government, Swan County is quickly becoming home to new and expanding businesses striving for success of their own, securing the namesake, Florida's new frontier. Located in north-central Florida, Swan County is within five hundred miles of nearly sixty-five million people and just an hour's drive from Jacksonville, Tallahassee, and Gainesville. Surrounded by several interstates, major highways, railways, and airports, travel and transportation is fast and convenient. Experience the success and soul of Swan County, as so many businesses have.
Winter Holtz is a wood products company. Our primary focus and the manufacturing focus in the United States is dimensional lumber, and we supply people like Home Depot and Lowe's. Being close to I-ten and I-75 really helps us efficiently distribute our product to our primary customers. In addition, there are a lot of local distribution centers that help supply the state of Florida. I am Philip Platt, and I am Swan County.
There's a lot of drawl to this area because of our resources, because look how beautiful it is here. We have really sensitive water resources, being that we're around the Swan River. We have more first magnitude springs here than anywhere else on the planet. And so we have to take care of what we have. Over five generations, six with us, that this farm has evolved and expanded with each generation over time and diversified and grown in acres with each person that the torch has been passed to. We are Ladida Farms, and we are Swan County.
We are a fully integrated poultry processing facility. We are serviced through a hundred and eight family farms that are within a fifty-five mile radius of here in Swan County. Our key customers here at Pilgrim's is Publix and Costco. So here in Swan County, the workforce is really great to work with, having a strong work ethic, and also have a great sense of pride in what they do.
Over the past couple of years, we've invested seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into the community. It's important for Pilgrim's to have outreach in the community because we're investing back into the future.
We are Swan County.
We are a regulated electric utility serving 1.9 million customers in Florida across thirty-six counties. Swan was very welcoming in terms of wanting us to be here, helping us with permitting. They have a great workforce. We recruit linemen and solar technicians from Swan County because of the education system they have here. They're very attentive to companies like us and our needs as we're developing new projects. Swan is a great place to, to live, to do business, and then to reside and enjoy. I am Swan County.
Parks and Recreation just plays a huge role in the health of our community, for our citizens, our visitors, just a work-life balance for employers and employees that are here. People come to visit the river, the springs, the state parks, the county parks. Tourism is economic development in Swan County.
We are Swan County.
We are a privately owned assisted living communities here in North Florida. We really serve the underserved population in the rural areas. This job allows me to form relationships with these people. I absolutely love spending time with my residents. We almost find reasons to celebrate because there's a big difference between existing and thriving. We want our community to thrive. That's what our job is.
We are Swan County.
Learn more about the successes and soul of Swan County at swan county E D O dot com.
All right. That's the video. There will be multiple versions. It will be marketed, it will be, it will rest on our website as well as on YouTube and other channels. And we'll have different length videos off of this video depending on the venue that we're, we're sitting upon. So, but this type of video and this type of marketing is also what's leading us to the next point I'd like to make, and that's the groundbreaking that we had this past week. Obviously, I know a lot of you heard about it, and a lot of you were there. But this was something the commissioners have worked hard on for years. Something our department's worked on hard for years and something Team Swan has worked really hard on. We're very proud to be partnered with this particular company. And it's our, Mr. Chairman, a quick run through kind of last week's events.
Yes, sir.
I do want to give a shout out before we get started. Mr. Scott and his staff always on top of things and helping to, to get this off the ground. Mr. Jason, very back here in the whole Parks team. Man, couldn't do it without those guys on this particular event especially. And then the River Oak, for those youth, you know, that were out there, and we'll have it in the video, you know, they custom made the cookies with this company logo on there. So all team players, all from the community, so a big family effort. So we'll get started, and this is Wave Armor. This is the company that you guys have heard of called Project Wave. This is the site out at ninety and I-ten out at the Catalas site. This is just a picture of the ground before anything started. This is the actual site of the groundbreaking. Again, this is just a little trail that goes to the property. This is where we're setting up the tent for the groundbreaking. Obviously, y'all can figure that out, but. So this is the Wave Armor trailer. This is their display trailer. They go to numerous events to display their product, and this is the actual trailer they use for that event. Again, set up another one of the trailers. Some tired dudes sitting on stage. It was very dusty. Isn't it ironic that the rivers are flooded and there was dust everywhere? Kind of welcome to Swan County. So we had to cheers, we were trying to keep all the cheers covered so people, especially ladies, when they sat down didn't get their, their clothing dirty. This is actually Deputy Secretary of Economic Development, Jason Mahon. He gave a speech and talked about Swan County and the relationship that our commissioners have with the governor's office and how that has been critical to the recent grant funding that we've received for infrastructure and development, not just at the Catalas site, but at the other interchanges. And he was really supportive of the project and bought his best wishes. Of course, I think y'all know this gentleman, Senator Simon. He's a great advocate for Swan County. He has helped us raise millions of dollars to, I, I mean, everything from, from water and wastewater lines to grants. When Hurricane Adelia was here, this man was in this county almost every single day, or he called us every single day and talked with us. We toured poultry farms, I don't know if there's any of those people in here, but he went on site, and I was with him to, to show those people how much we cared and that we were going to help. Jeff Hendry, North Florida Economic Development Partnership. He, he received the call for this project at ten o'clock on a Sunday evening. And the North Florida Economic Development Partnership is a fourteen-county rural group that we all work together to promote development. Jeff Hendry is the executive director of that group. I sit as the current chairman, and Jeff couldn't be more complimentary of this group of people. What was the phrase he used, Chrisa? She doesn't like to talk in front of people. All right, Commissioner. So Jeff said we were the model for, 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 for development, and he, he had a lot of complimentary things to say. And he also commended all the commissioners for actually attending the events, getting outside of Swan County, going to Tallahassee, sitting down with people, and promoting Swan County. So it was real good. He had some real great comments. For those that were there, I can't remember exactly where he, but he did a great job too, so. Can you see that on your side? Okay, skip that one. Yeah, yeah, that's right over here. Okay. So for, some of you know this story and some of you don't, but Commissioner Hale, I work with all these commissioners. We all work as a great team and do things. And on this particular project, three years ago, Commissioner Hale and I worked together on this project when it came down through the state and the regional folks down through Swan County. And we had an opportunity to, to start the process of trying to win the project. So I don't know, Commissioner Hale, you want to fill them in?
No, I'm glad.
Grab your microphone.
Can y'all hear, can y'all hear me okay? A little better? Jimmy and I met, the owner of the company, Mr. Rick, three years ago, I think, pretty much to the date, three years ago. And showed him some property and trying to learn a little bit about his company and what he needed and how that would fit Swan County. First thing that attracted me to him was it was a family-owned business. And that's something that, it was near and dear to my heart, having a family-owned business here in Swan County for all the years that we have. That's one of the first things I looked for. And he's trying to expand that and share that with his, his daughter, which is going to be running this facility. But anyhow, the talks started, and he was in a bit of a hurry. I don't think he was, I won't say not impressed, but he told Jimmy and I he'd be in touch with us. And he reached over to his truck and he gave us a couple of hats. That's what he gave us. I thought it was a party gift. He just kind of left. See you later, fellas. We stayed in touch with him. I think Jimmy called him as much as I did. We had found out he had bought some property in neighboring county and was heading in that direction. And that's fine. I mean, we want to support neighboring counties, we want them to support us. But we stayed in touch, and we just stayed in touch, stayed in touch. For whatever reasons, it didn't work out over there. I remember I was coming home from a body of water somewhere. And everywhere I went, just so y'all know, I took this hat. It meant something, but I took this hat. If I was on the Swan River, I was taking pictures with this hat. If I went to Steam Hatchet, I was taking pictures with this hat. And I was making sure to send them to him and say, hey, we want you here in Swan County. Your product, your brand, your family, we want you to part of the Swan County family. You know, we, it just kept a good, a good communication, a good dialogue between me and Mr. Rick. One time I called and spoke to him, and I don't know, it was a few weeks after that, I called Jimmy and I said, hey, just so, you know, I talked with Rick a few weeks ago. He goes, hey, he just called me last week. He's coming into town. I think the rest is history from there. He came back, met with Jimmy and Ms. Chrisa, and they did what they do. And we went out there and met again, and here they are, the parts of Swan County. And that's the, the long story short. But I'm thankful to have a company like that. And this is, it's water sports, you know, it's floating docks. It's, it's a product you can drive your boat or jet ski up on to get it out of the water. And he makes all kinds of other things. He's got contracts with cooler companies and things of that nature. But again, it's a business, a family business that I feel like can be accepted and welcomed by our community. Folks want to work there, and they're already working, if I'm wrong correctly, but I think there's already talks with the River Technical College, things of that nature. Employees getting on board and being ready to go from day one. I don't know if I left anything out, but it's, he, he's been good to us. And I tell you, and I mentioned this when I was out there, and I mean it. I told him he's part of the Swan County family, and I mean that. And I think his daughter did quite understand that in the beginning, but I think she's come around to it. She sees that, you know, we are one big family here.
Well, I think it's different because, as you mentioned, we are a family. And that, that company is based out of Minnesota. And, and they have went through fourteen expansions over the life of the company. And so now they're completely filled up, and they're looking to expand to the south. And we were lucky enough to get there. But I know we're taking a little time because this story, this is a three-year story, guys. I'm at two this month. It was three years we started working on this project. Ms. Chrisa. That's the owner, Mr. Rick Johannik, and his daughter, who was the president, Jennifer Isted, no, Jennifer Johannik Isted. Just a crowd shot showing all the people that were there and everybody that attended. It was, it was really nice. This is Chrisa's sheet, no, I'm just kidding. Wave Armor Water, we thought that was pretty impressive, right? We had a Wave Armor water on site out there, so. There are the cookies. If you see anybody from River Oak and especially if they're in the Culinary Arts Program, or if you're doing an event, they can do this, guys, right out here at Own College. Isn't that cool? They put the logos on those cookies, and they were a huge hit for us, all just supporting what we do. This is the setup of the groundbreaking. You'll see the display trailer in the back, and we'll show you a little bit more about that display trailer in just a few minutes. Again, just another aerial shot. Mr. Rick was adamant that we have the American flag flying. And so we, for him, we made sure that there was a picture with that flag flying. He was, was real important to him. I can't miss some cameo shots. It was a great day. If you see the Little Derby, and if y'all see Senator Simon, he's going to kill me. The Little Derbies were provided by Wave Armor for people. And I think some of you guys may have got some, but it says Wave Armor, but it's way too small for my big old head, so I couldn't put one on. But, but the senator did, and he got some, some great shots with our team. Again, there's a couple more, so we appreciate him very much. And, and you can tell there's a definite relationship between him and these commissioners. Again, just a shot of, they wanted to get a shot with Commissioner Hale and, and the senator. And we're going to carry through real quick on this because I know it's taking a little time. This is the Wave Armor team, Rick and his daughter, and then that's their CFO, the COO, the marketing team. And so anyway, that's Team Wave Armor, that all of those people came down for this event. This is all of our elected officials, all the commissioners are in there, as well as our state officials. So appreciate all of them participating. Also, who else is in there? I think the city of Lava was in, the mayor's there, and I think Miss Owens was in that picture. So we appreciate their participation. So this is Team Swan. All the folks that work for Swan that had a piece in this project that were at this event. I know there's a lot of you in this audience, and I can't thank you enough because you never know which one of you made the final, the final piece, the final, the project. If anything happens along the way that doesn't work out, that project's gone somewhere else, right? So thank you, Team Swan. You deserve this. This is the actual groundbreaking, and in this picture, you'll see the contractors in this picture, engineers in this picture, the owners and all of the officials that spoke from the state. So just kind of a group, but this is kind of the final picture that we have showing the actual groundbreaking when it, when it occurred. And again, there's an aerial now of what it looks like after last week. That was the day of the groundbreaking. You see all the cars parked. That was where we were set up in the left-hand side of the screen. And you see the dirt work has started on the site. Right there, if you go on I-ten, you'll see it. Did I step on you? Hit me?
I will.
Okay. I keep getting closer over here trying to see. This is a rendering of the Wave Armor building. This is what the facility will look like. It'll be two hundred fifteen thousand square feet, thirty-two foot high eve. Then we're going to start out with initially about fifty employees, and that'll be growing as the company expands. But a real nice structure, something that Swan County should be very proud of. But a real nice structure, something that Swanee County should be very proud of. Is that the last one? Alright, that was kind of a recap of the groundbreaking. We've got one last piece, and because I know you guys probably still don't quite understand what they do, I got a little minute and a half video right here, and I want you guys to, if you'll bear with me just one more minute, and look at this, because I want you to see what this company produces and is bringing right here to Swanee County.
Jimmy, how many jobs did you just say?
Yeah, 50, 50 jobs initially, and then the plan is, is over a three-year period, growing to 100. So that's Wave Armor, a great asset to this community. Again, I wanna thank everybody for attending that event, all the different groups over there, organizations, Development Authority, Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Danielle and her team, everybody that attended, but especially you guys, man. This would not exist without you guys. So I thank you very much. I thank you for supporting our department and Ms. Chris on what we do. And I'm done, boss.
Well, I just wanna thank you again. I know I thanked you privately and told you and Chris and Greg and Jason and all the, Mr. Meeks is here, all the different Department Heads and their staff that helped out. I mean, you guys put on a heck of a show, a very nice welcome party for Wave Armor. I think they'll be an asset to the community, and obviously Commissioner Hale for working with Rick for three years and continue to stay in contact, because you never know, those seats will sprout. So me and Jimmy, Chris, Team Swanee, we appreciate y'all, and I know that the community thanks you as well.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any of you guys wanna, you know, imagine that for free?
I think you summed it up. I mean, again, it's Team Swanee. They tried to put me up on that stage by myself, and I made all the guys get up there behind me. I was gonna stand there. It was, it's good to see things like this come to Swanee County. These are the type of businesses to look for, and, you know, just route it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are at the consent agenda, which are item four through 17. On item number six, guys, Mr. Clark here pointed out the request, disposition request, number should be at number 45 and not 25B. So for the record, it's just a numerical number for the disposition request. So we got fours through 17. Any questions concerned? Would you like to discuss any of them, please? Let me know. If not, we have a motion to approve. A motion by Commissioner Perkins. Second by Commissioner Hale. All the paper, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I think we skipped right through the 5:35 time specific, but I believe petition was drawn, so I wasn't really sticking to the schedule. But we have two, item number 18 to 19, those petitions have been drawn. Mr. Morrison, do you want to elaborate on?
All I can say is that the landowner, after we addressed the legal issues, Mr. Meeks contacted the landowners, they were agreeing with the petitions. The county's got no further questions.
Okay. So that takes care of item number 18 and 19. The next item only it did is constitutional officers. Constitutional, see the sheriff coming up. Welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, I got everybody here in one place. Just wanna appreciate all of your phone calls, text messages, you know, my father passed it, my mother and her family, her and my family, and what, thank you for the flowers you sent, funeral, so I appreciate it all. Bless you too, Greg. I appreciate all the phone calls, text messages. I know a lot, and I appreciate the time, but it was kind of a rough time, but anyway, thank y'all.
Yes, Mr. Milo was a beacon of light in our community for a long, long time.
Yes, sir.
He'll certainly be missed, I do know that. If there's anything that we can do, if you or your family don't have it, they can reach out to us.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And they do too, you know, they want me to express their gratitude that y'all, wish y'all reached out to us, and we thank y'all.
He was a good man.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Any other constitutional officers here wishing to speak? Staff items. Do we have any staff items? Mr. Scott here. Mr. Curry, I see you standing up. Welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman, thank you. I was gonna mention too, obviously y'all know Jimmy did a great job out there for that event. Just the little things that matter, he didn't mention, but he told me the story, was the fire department, fire rescue was out there, and I think had the kids from the family there over looking at the fire trucks and pulling them up on there. And it's just little things like that that Jimmy talks about that can make a difference. Now, they're already here, but I mean, that's the kind of thing that happens, and so just shout out to the fire department and those guys. Not to call you out, but I thought that was neat. So just a quick update, hadn't been up in a while. If y'all have any questions, just gonna run down some projects and give an update, and if you have anything, just stop me. The Greenway down in Branford, we're about 50% complete. Those guys are moving along, laying asphalt and renovating that trail down there. So that's moving fast. The bridge and then some of the lighting will come at the end of the project, the asphalt's going in now. Charles Springs, we just had a bid opening today, had some good numbers, competitive numbers, and actually under budget, so that's looking promising. We'll review that and hopefully get a contractor awarded and start working on a floating dock, of all things, out there at Charles Springs. Our FDAX project, we should be going out to bid for the demolition of the Completworth. Eric did a nice article in the paper last week, and that was timely and interesting. Hopefully, we'll get that advertised here pretty soon and start working on that in the next month or so. We've got a revision, first and second draft revision with the architect on the plan, so getting input from the Lifestyle Board and FFA and different ones on some of the amenities in that building. So we're moving along there as well. Kind of like Jimmy, a lot of projects and a lot of progress, but you don't see anything yet coming above ground, so we're getting there. We're making strides. Royal Springs, of course, the river's up, so everything's kind of slowed down there, but we, as you know, will be charging admission there this season. We have not yet. We're working through a permitting process with the district, and all that looks promising. Gene is ready to go and start working on some millings and some road work out there into the spring itself, and some boat trailer parking down to the boat ramp, so we should get that. There is a plan with $5 per entry for residents to enter the spring. Some of the local residents that live in what they call Swanee Valley Estates, they will be, they have property rights to that park, and so they'll have some sort of a pass to enter the spring free of charge, those residents in that neighborhood. RFQ is out for our Master Planning Services, and we're getting some interest in there. A lot of questions, a lot of calls about that. Telford, you know, I mentioned before that the district had asked us if we're interested in taking ownership of part of Telford Springs property out there, and so we're looking at that. I think there was some interest from the board and Mr. Scott. They've also now come back, and they're interested in Bounding Springs and Swanee Springs. So we're not committing to any of that yet, but we're gonna take a look, do some research, kind of kick it around, and go out there and see what's what these days. Of course, the river is up, so it's hard to tell, but I guess it's good and bad. They think that we can help with the public access of those properties and the management of those properties. At the same time, there's an expense there, so we will keep you informed and bring that back to you, obviously, for any kind of decision-making with the district. Last little project, the Coliseum. I know that y'all have kind of been on your radar, the Coliseum and X2 renovations, and so we're starting on that. Mark's department is helping us through the lobby and the bathrooms right now of the Coliseum, and we'll move over to X2 and get that project off the books and make those improvements there that are well-needed. Just lastly, just kind of some everyday things. I put a summer flyer on your desk up there. We're getting ready for summer programs. Bay Bridge is going on. We do have a district and a state tournament this summer, the second week of June and July. I'll bring some information back for that, but it was an honor to be asked again by the district to host that tournament. Had a huge weightlifting event this past weekend. I don't know if anybody read the paper, but from eight-year-olds to 78-year-olds in there throwing weights up, doing cleaning jerks, and I mean, it was impressive. A lot of people went through there, and it's a very successful event. They'd like to come back in future years, so look forward to that.
That was like an Olympic qualifier, wasn't it?
Yeah, they had some future Olympians there, and a couple that were trying to qualify at the last minute. Yeah, it's pretty neat stuff, except for those leotards they have to wear, the tight handle.
You didn't have yours on?
No, sir. Just let you know too, FDOT, they contacted Mr. Scott. They're gonna host a Rural Summit at the Coliseum and Fairgrounds this summer later on, so I'm sure you'll be getting invitations and information for that, for some FDOT programs, but they asked us if we could host that. We did get a new LED sign at Sports Complex, if you've been by there, compliments of Hurricane Idalia, and really just a thank you to First Federal. They got their name on the park, First Federal Bank Sportsplex, and they kicked in $10,000 to make that sign happen to the hurricane. Insurance check wasn't big enough, so thank you to them for helping us out with that. It's a nice improvement to the park. Also, just if you see any work, the county is helping provide some lime rock to the school. They're gonna, out off of the Carol property, the 70 acres that we bought next to the Sports Complex, there's gonna be an exit road from the middle school on the south side of the middle school property to alleviate some of the traffic coming back onto Walker and into town. So Gene and the guys are kind of helping with some guidance and, I think, some lime rock to help them get there out onto the pass road there. They're trying to get that done by July, before school starts, this school and all that sort of. And just another shout-out, Keith and Nina, we're working with them, and Charlie and IT, and probably Ms. Vicki, I imagine, trying to get some basic, like some credit card readers out at the concession stand, and summer camp, and the pool, and maybe the springs, start collecting money. In this day and age, you know, people wanna use credit card or debit card, so it's way more complicated than I ever thought it was be like, just throw the square out there and take the money. So there's a lot of security and other issues, but just thank those guys for working through that with us and helping us, and we're getting there, but it's just a small necessity in this day and age that people expect, and our customers, you know, are looking for. That's really all I have, just, you know, thank you guys for your support, and if y'all have any needs or ideas, pick up the phone.
I appreciate it.
I do.
You do? I'm certain you do. You don't have any questions for Mr. Curry before he leaves?
Appreciate it when he does.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I wonder who was there before him? He doesn't lock their shutters, does he?
Say it again, and he'll hit you in the head again. Next item on the agenda, County Attorney Allen. Okay, Mr. Attorney Allen, what's up?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I will note that I deferred the last two times, so I gotta make up for it now. And like any county commission day, I started off with four on my list, and now it's a six. First, I'd like to point out that a year ago was, the first meeting in May was my first meeting here as the county attorney, so this is the year. So for those of you who took me under, I got you. So, but a couple of things to go through. First, and I'm not saying anything, I just wanna float the idea by you guys to tell me if you guys want me to take further action. Kind of, something came to our attention this morning about a gap in our policy, personnel policy, which is different than some of the surrounding counties. So the way our current policy reads regarding a drug-free workplace is that somebody has a prescription for a drug that they're taking legally, not saying anything, and then they cannot be found, there can be no negative action taken by the county against that person. So as a cure hypothetical, that's not indicative of anything. If somebody has a prescription for, let's say, oxycodone or another, anything in the morphine family, under our current policy, if they were operating heavy machinery while being under that prescription, they've done nothing wrong as far as our policy's concerned, even if they were to cause an accident. Obviously, they did do something wrong. Common sense tells us this, but as I was speaking with some county employees today, we're the government, so we don't get to use common sense. It has to be, you know, rules. So some of the things, one of the things that the surrounding counties have, which I thought was a good idea after this kind of loophole came to my attention, was amending the personnel policies to say that if you, that a person, if a county employee has a prescription for some type of substance, a lawful prescription, it'd be kind of kept as confidential part of their health file. But a prescription for some type of substance which would affect their ability, for example, to operate heavy machinery or otherwise impair their ability to perform their job, they need to proactively let their supervisor know, so that way corrective and protective action can be taken on behalf of the county before something bad happens. Now, nothing bad has happened, but it's just, you know, you can see the problem, so let's do what we can to fix it.
So in other words, just like give notice to their supervisors, like, hey, I may not need to be running a heavy piece of equipment there around my people.
Fair enough. But here's what it would change. So under the current policy, let's say somebody, again, with a totally valid OxyContin prescription, operating heavy machinery underneath influence of OxyContin. Under our policy, that person has done nothing wrong, and there can be no corrective action taken against that person. Under the idea of what they do in the other counties is the burden would be on them to provide their prescription ahead of time to say, hey, this is something that I'm using, at least for the duration of the prescription, make accommodations, et cetera. And so what it changes is, let's say that person doesn't give us the prescription, which is when does it come? Now, they have done something wrong, and we could take corrective action against them, you know, up to including termination or what have you, because obviously, they did do something wrong by operating machinery under the influence of something, even if they have a prescription. So that's just kind of a loophole in our personnel policy that exists right now that can be corrected, but I wanted to float it by you guys before I started doing the work of drafting the appropriate table.
Fellas?
Absolutely.
So that'll be a draft, you're definitely making it back to the board?
Yeah, there'd be a formal resolution amending our personnel policies, but I didn't want to incur the time and expense of doing that if you guys didn't want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you wanna respect the employee that's on the prescriptions' ability to heal and go through the process, but also respecting coworkers' ability to stay safe while at work, so.
Absolutely. And the public, I mean, somebody that doesn't need to be, again, no hypothetically, operating a road grader, you know.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins. Now, you know, some do have those, that additional marijuana, so that's all covered in that also, which you.
So this, because, remember that we are a complete subsidiary of the state of Florida. So if somebody's using marijuana and they fail a drug test and they don't have a medical marijuana prescription, that would violate our policy. But hypothetically, right now, if somebody does have a prescription for medical marijuana and they fail a drug test, that does not violate our policy, because under Florida law, of which we are a whole subsidiary of, that is a legal substance. So, and so kind of what I just discussed in the oxycodone example would apply with equal force to medical marijuana. So we can't, so if somebody with a medical marijuana prescription could still be a county employee, that's fine, but they would, again, just be subject to what we will talk about here, notify people ahead of time, just that way restrictions can be made in terms of what kind of machinery and stuff.
I understand. You good?
Yes. A litigation update, a couple of things. First, I saw Ms. Young is here. I'm having Spirit of the Swanee, and we were served with a notice of intent for someone who is staying out at the camp that's being maintained over at Spirit of the Swanee for injuries sustained there, being filed against them and us, reported to our insurance carrier. I don't anticipate we will hear about it again. The insurance carrier will do it, because that's in their litigation wheelhouse.
That's from the store, Display Store?
Right, so one of the Display St- Right, so one of the displaced store persons who's staying out at the Spirit of the Swanee in that housing is.
No good deed goes unpushed?
I'm not. The other thing, and I know there's people here who were talking about it earlier, in the terms of the RV parks. As you guys are all aware, after our last meeting, there was legal action filed by citizens responsive to the RV parks, asking for appeal. I filed a motion to dismiss on behalf of the county. Unfortunately, it was just filed too late, so that motion is heard, said to be heard on June 6th, so I can fill in the boards to what occurred in that lawsuit after that. The next thing is, I got a letter today from Florida Green Finance Authority. So if the board's aware, we authorize multiple property assessed clean energy loans throughout the county, or the PACE loans. And so the way all of those PACE loans operate is interlocal agreements. And so the way this particular interlocal operates is, its board is a rotating group of members of participating counties. So it's our turn, if we want to put one of our board members on their board, to manage their PACE program. We don't have to. If we don't, we'll go back into the rotation, but we have thirty days to accept their offer and put somebody on their board, or reject it, and let that throw the next person on. So I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, as to what y'all want to do.
Well, I'll ask the rest of them. I actually, honestly, Commissioner Perkins, with all due respect, I kind of had you in mind, because PACE goes right along with construction, and, but if you're busy and you don't have time, I mean, we can't pass, I guess, our opportunity. But I think you're probably one of the most familiar with construction, and I think it's for financing, like air conditioners and hot, that kind of stuff that goes through the tax rolls, correct?
Correct. It's basically a mortgage that we're tax collecting, they can have.
Which I don't really like the program, to be honest with you, but.
It's legal in the case.
I understand.
That program is designed so that those people that, you know, who were to pay out of pocket or for items repaired from their home, then they would lend them the money just when they're paid back to the county.
No. No, so the way these operate is, I'm gonna be very careful with my word choice here, I'm gonna be denotating. A PACE loan is a company, for example, they'll come through and they'll offer to change your air conditioner, fix your roof, anything which can be attributed to a green. And they charge interest of between six and twelve percent. But the security here, unlike getting a mortgage, which most people would do, they put it on your tax roll. So you don't have to pay any money now, but it's gonna be assessed as part of your tax bill. So our tax collector is responsible for collecting these mortgage payments. And if you don't make the mortgage payment, they take your house. So that's what they do. And we're allowed to be on the board if we want to.
Again, I clearly don't like the program. I think it's, maybe, puts some good people in some bad situations from time to time, but not maybe clearly understanding it. I mean, charging twelve percent with a mortgage is a pretty high interest rate, but.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, they have to, let's just say they want to sell that house, they have to dislose.
They can't sell it, and more importantly, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac will not loan a house subject to, I don't want to be quiet.
But I think we all agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think you're just a little bit.
I'm with you, Chairman.
You're with me on what I think, or you're on with?
But I'm in favor of letting him do it.
Just passing up our turn?
I just want to, I'm just saying, y'all do have the option to terminate.
Y'all good with that? We will pass on our turn to put a board member. What do they meet at, out of curiosity?
They meet quarterly. This particular one, again, there's.
Yeah, there's four or four?
Third floor. And they meet at the town, because again, these are all interlocals, the town of Lantana, L-A-N-T-A-N-A, and Magnolia Park. And so you can apply either in person or by mail.
Not right around the corner.
Commissioner Perkins, we won't ask you to drive to Lantana.
You're welcome.
Attorney, you got?
Two more, real quick, Mr. Chairman. The next is, I was contacted earlier in the week, last week, about a piece of vacant property down in Branford that the county may have some interest in. I know, Mr. White, you were the one who brought it to my attention. Maybe if you can brief kind of the commission as to what the property is?
It's a, it's a little piece of property, if you're aware, down in Branford, we got the Public Works Department there, and there's a street between the public works property that we own now and this piece of property. And it's four lots? Is it three or four lots?
I think it's, I think it's four. Yeah, it's four.
It's four lots, and the realtor brought it to my attention, and I called Mr. Scott to ask him what his thoughts on it were, which I was in agreement that I thought it was a good idea for the county to purchase that piece of property. As, there's a street that runs through there, and I plan on asking the town of Branford if we acquire that piece of property. There's a due diligence contract to close that street and eventually fence that whole area. And as of right now, we don't have a fence. We have a fence around some of it, but not all of it. And so just from a pure security standpoint, and the property being available, I brought it to the attention of the county, and that's where we're at.
Well, in reality, honestly, aren't we already parking and using this property?
Yes.
Tractors are already there?
So if I'm not mistaken, you're talking about what would be north of that street?
That's correct.
Where we park lowers and stuff?
That's correct. Kind of an L-shaped piece that's beside us, and then right around behind that studio.
So this would allow us to potentially, town of Branford, let us close that street and secure the yard?
You can fence it all.
Not be trespassed. What do we?
The purchase price on it right now, Mr. Chairman, is forty-five thousand dollars. So what I would ask, if the board does want to move forward with procuring those four lots, is the board authorizing the chairman to enter into a contract to purchase those four lots at the purchase price, subject to due diligence specifically, including a survey and appraisal.
Which will be?
Right, so basically, we'd agree to buy it, but we'd have enough time to go and get a survey, and you'll get an appraisal, make sure that we're not getting our, coming into a pool with no one.
I mean, I kind of feel like we've already, I mean, we're already using the property technically. I don't know who the owners are or where they live, but apparently, they don't mind, because we've been on there for a while. But, I mean, I think we've outgrown what we own, obviously, because we're using their property kind of. I think that we probably should go ahead and fix it, so we don't have to move, because we have fuel tanks, we have a shop there, building, we have structures in place on the property that we do own. So, you know, either we expand our lot size or pick up and move, and that gets costly, too.
Even, Mr. Chairman, we all see that, and it's growing faster than any part of the county, from what we understand. And it may be a need for another county to look there, so.
Well, that was my thoughts on it, and purely from a security standpoint as well, because we don't, we're not, I guess we could fence off what we have there now, but it'd be a lot easier if we acquired this piece of property. And like you said, that and the county's growing really quick, too, and at some point down in the future, you know, that may be its own public works apartment itself, you know, and, you know, something. So just looking out at the future, I just think it's a really good idea to purchase.
If we have any, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
If we have any kids on that property outside of, it's off to county purposes.
I think.
I got the call the day one on the morning.
So the name's listed with a really exciting top of the realtor, so it must be listed.
It's listed, yes.
So there again, if maybe, if the county doesn't buy, and a new person does, then we're gonna have to, you know, move our equipment or figure out a way to do something different, because we're already parking equipment on this, part of this property. Because we're parking equipment on the north side of the street, and that street separates what we own and what we're talking about behind the knife.
Well, it tends to be the parking lot.
Yeah. I'm guessing the owners either don't care or are local.
I think they're not local. Well, I think it's also in the state right now, so they haven't figured all that out.
You want to be a motion for that?
Yeah, I would need a motion, I would need a motion for approval board action for authorizing the chairman to execute a contract to purchase that lot, one, two, three, and fourteen blocking Branford, Florida, for the purchase price of forty-five thousand dollars, subject to a due diligence period for purposes of getting appraisal and a survey.
Good.
So a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner. I'll go with Mobley. And also, at the same time, I'll take a second for Commissioner White. So all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Morrison?
Last one, because I just want to thank Commissioner Mobley last week inviting me out to meet with the fair committee. They had some questions regarding, because it is this one, again, fair, about certain things that can and can't be done. But I wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Mobley for the invitation, and also just to point out that I had no idea as to how much work those guys put in year-round. The fair just got over, and they're already working real hard on what to do for next year. So that was just impressive, and I wanted to take this opportunity to do that. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morrison. Consultant items, next item on the agenda. Any consultants here wishing to speak?
Mr. True.
Yes, sir.
You do, Mr. True.
I'm sure it is, sir. I do mention that, but I got two written down beside it. I've got Mr. Hill, and I don't know if we covered your part or not. Commissioner Hill, yes, sir. Commissioner Allen, my bad.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So several years ago, we had, went through the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, the Department of the Government, to create a lower, with the coochie, Upper Swanee River Task Force. At the time, Valdosta was dropping sewage, having spills, and running into our waterways, and that was driven down here, and that's been in our community, along with Hamilton County, Madison County. And we got with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, created that board. That board was paused a few years ago. Valdosta actually passed a one-cent sales tax to correct, to fix, and to start doing a better job maintaining their facilities up there. I can't think of many problems we've had, but here recently, with the rains and all we've had, they had another big spill, six hundred forty-seven million gallons. Not all of that was sewage. I think roughly a hundred fifty million, something like that. But it's still enough to be alarming and concerning to me and to the community. So I went over to Madison County, or I was actually invited to come over to Madison County and speak to their board. They're all on board. Hamilton County's on board. I got ahold of the Planning Council, Scott Pines. That board voted to stand up and support us and reactivate that. I just need consent from you guys and a letter from our attorney that we want to reactivate that board. And, you know, it's not to go up there and jump in their face and be ugly to them. They have problems, and they need to fix them and correct them, but it's just, you know, a way of us to draw a little bit more attention to them and hold them a little bit more accountable, and make sure they are doing all the things they promised our communities that we're gonna do. And I think they're willing to have us as guests up there, so we'll kind of be a part of their meetings. I just think something, it's our work, folks. It's our, it's our most precious natural resource. We need to take care of that. And I'd like to reactivate that board with y'all's permission, along with all them counties that'll be involved, and I'd like to serve as well.
Yes, sir.
That's true.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Is Lafayette County involved as well?
Absolutely.
Because I've had several phone calls from outside the county over this very issue, so.
Yes.
No, I would say we need to definitely jump on board, be a part of that, for our swamp county. So we got a consensus?
We got waterway.
Y'all doing that money? And Mr. Attorney, you got a consensus to?
And just so far, to where I've already spoken with Mr. Reeves, the county attorney over in Madison, he's taken lead on putting the legalities together, but I may have something for you all in the future, just in terms of, the real message would be to show solidarity of this board, backing Commissioner Hale and his representation on that particular committee when they go to, up to Valdosta to, I don't know, confront the elected, certainly have some discussions about their way.
Yes, sir. You got a consensus five to? Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Reeves?
You're good? Commissioner Perkins, you good?
Yes, good.
Consultant items, thank you. Anyone standing up, any consultants wishing? Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
I just want to say, with those that's plugged here, I mean, I've heard we decided to take with the court next agenda, and with attorney, yes, the paper I've been working for, the duty team, I think those that want to be a big year now.
Okay, yes, sir. Fair enough. Yes, sir. General business, item number twenty, discuss a possible board action letter pickup. Mr. Greg Scott?
Mr. Reeves, as you know, we're, we have some bids for litter pickup. That's a hot topic every year. Been trying to find firms to do this over the past seven years. We had pre-qualified applicants, companies that sent in bids, and we had one that, which was for a lawn care. It was a lowest bid for a total of ninety-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. It was bid on cycles a year. And what I would propose is that we approve this, and also continue to have our crews, who are already doing it, do hotspots, do whatever we got bad spots, we can hop in and take those things. For example, we had last week, one of the mowers called a garbage bag, messed it up. It went out the next day, the pump blew up, but before we could get back to pick it up, so had a crew going out there already, but jumped on it, got to take it up, that's, my recommendations for approval. We had my, the question budget to, for the board's budget.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
You said that you were gonna keep the regular crew to picking up the hotspots. Is that the inmate crew, or what?
Inmates, we have, we have some of the staff going also, as a combination.
But we're not gonna have a full-time litter department doing this. We're gonna use these people and then our people just to catch up. I don't want it to sneak through.
The hotspots, it's a issue. We're keeping that route. They got hands hot.
I think.
That garbage bag happened in three, buddy.
I'll tell you, I hope they can do it for that, and I think that's a real bargain, and I'm excited to see.
Amen.
We'll expedite getting that taken care of.
Yeah, that was my only concern, is asking our sometime long-winded attorney to expedite this contract approval, to try to get these folks out there. I mean, the grass is growing, so the mowers are moving, so the quicker we can pick it up ahead of the mowers, hopefully, we'll minimize the pieces that they got to pick up.
How does the half-cycle work? I'm just curious.
That is a good question, but I don't have an answer for it, because we use a model we used before, and the verdict, and I guess I'll beat whatever, whoever commissioner is nicest.
So we're gonna have to find out if the half-cycle's what you say?
We'll work that out through the contract.
I mean, it starts with the chairman, it works down.
Well, if that's the case, can we, what about four? I mean, we can adjust it per cycle, just do it per cycle, change the forty.
And just do four cycles instead of three-point? I was curious on why there was a three-point five. I don't know if it was because the hundred thousand dollar mark was the number that we, you know, that he was trying to stay below, or what? It's kind of what I was thinking, because it's.
Too, we do it per cycle, that way if we needed to add another cycle, you know, catch it earlier, or something, we have that flexibility.
I'd like to make a recommendation to go back to whoever put this bid in, and ask them how much more it'd be to add that half-cycle to it. If it's just gonna, if you can divide this by three and a half, add a half back to it and do four cycles before we do a contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that, assuming that number's consistent with the mileage number here, to go ahead and get board action, to draft the contract for that four-cycle proposal.
Yes, sir. Mr. Scott, you got the funds allocated in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm in support of it, I'm just waiting for you guys. Have a motion by Commissioner White? And that is to approve for four cycles, long-term attorney, Mr. Scott, gotta work that out.
As long as it's on the same cost basis.
As long as it's on the same price per whatever. I had a second, was that Perkins? Commissioner Perkins? All in favor, signal my aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm looking forward to getting some garbage picked up out there. Yes, sir, I, I'm looking forward to getting some garbage picked up out there, I mean, I mean, our guys, they bust their behinds, but, uh, it's a never-ending process, I mean, they can go down in one day and within four days, it looks like, you know, they, they hadn't even been there. Um, where are we at? Additional agenda items, item number twenty-one, Mr. Scott, you have any additional agenda items or anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, see, number twenty-two, administrators' comments and information, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir, I'll make it brief, um, Mr. Norris and I was talking over the past year or so about staff training and, uh, Chris and, and Lady work, the lady that worked with Chris worked it before, on some staff training, the customer service, uh, we did the first round, which is, uh, you know, internal, talking to different departments, it went well, um, we do more follow-up as we go with that, but as well, you know, the, um, the, the employees are responding as we engage them in more things and this is a nice, nice thing to see, a lot of positive comments came from that, that short, while one with Lady, uh, going to a larger program for the other staff to be part of that, so she'll go into observing and then just tweaking and make recommendations how we do better. Um, a couple of little things that I picked up when I was talking to her is making sure we, we are doing a better job on our homeboarding, our employees, making sure they understand things, just a little extra time with them, um, and about expectations of the county employee and, uh, also now, um, just the pride of the county. Um, the other, the other piece is, um, we get hearted and, and, um, a lot of calls on concerns, we need to make sure we're taking a breath and listening to the, to the calls. Staff does a very good job now, but I'm not saying they're not, they do a very good job now, but just, we need to listen a little better at what people are accurately asking. If it falls random, we need to finish them first before we grab the, the lot, but, yeah, that's, again, a bunch of people aren't employees at all, they're doing a tremendous job now, uh, this, answering these complaints and things we get in, I was making sure you prefer to listen. Uh, but, uh, the, uh, there's a public meeting, uh, regarding the one twenty-nine and I-ten interchange, uh, the DUT is hosting that, uh, you can go to their website and, and more information, but there's a virtual on May twenty-first, um, and also, uh, on person on May twenty-fourth, and we can get that information out to people if they have any questions.
Yeah, that information's listed on our website, I've seen, I think it's, what is it, North Florida Road or something like that, it's, it's, there's a, there's a virtual meeting, they have a public meeting about what's going to take place out there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I would like for the public to be involved in that, I mean, that's a, a project, obviously what I worked on from day one, you see how I'll take these projects, you know, to ask, uh, or to go to the provision, but it's, it's, it's much needed out there, I think everyone cringes when you go out there, I mean, we love the Bisbee, we love that, and that's where it's one and all that, but it's a, it's a dangerous intersection out there.
Well, to, yeah, you're a hundred percent right, I, I'm just, we can just go ahead and highlight, because I think everyone's seen the maps and the maps are out there, but there, there will be red lights at both, both the home ramps, uh, for I-ten, eastbound and westbound, there will be, those will not have traffic signals, as well as the entrance or the exit, I should say, of the, the very northern exit of the Bisbee will also have a traffic signal when they're done with the project and try to make that area a little safer, um, slow some cars down and, and there'll be, those will all be signals, so...
Not have that thunder will they clear as they come?
But there'll be some four-lane extension probably, uh...
I'd like to see it go out as far as the river.
The bridge from the river. I would love to see that too, and maybe Hamilton extend theirs.
Right.
I mean, that I seventy-five, I ten, it's going to lean it up sometime there, but nonetheless, it's going to steal your thunder, but...
No, 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 no.
What we've all seen, uh, those maps are out there for the public to see too, and I don't remember the number, Commissioner Hale, but it's like nineteen, eighteen million dollars?
Twenty dollars, one or two cents.
So, obviously, we are very thankful, um, of FDOT picking this up and honestly, I think that they expedited it, they did too, um, because they, they saw the need, that area is growing, um, and we are very, very...
Obviously, a reason needs to be done, but I'll tell you what got me behind that right out the gate, since I came to Commissioner, we all know Mr. Allen, uh...
I know Sam.
He got killed out there and, and that was what motivated me and, uh, you know, a lot of things, they, they, a lot of things are, well, how many axes did you have, how many tests did you, how many this? We don't need any, that's the way I look at it, so I'm just glad they jumped on board and, like you said, expedited that, recognize that it wasn't a issue.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Norris, I think he was, uh, instrument that also get that done out there at that, that area.
He got all the light, all that lighting done, what we did, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Flinley, sitting right, and I don't know about his hat he's wearing tonight, I ain't real fond of it.
I forgot.
Or his shirt, but, hey, we appreciate Commissioner Flinley, he worked hard to get lights there, as well as County Road one thirty-seven through FDOT, so, I think that's all there for that, and FDOT continues to compliment that work out there with what they're doing now.
Well, and we're getting a lot of positive comments, um, from FDOT about Swanning County and what we're doing, um, to the end of today, with one of our engineers and, uh, the Secretary of District Two said, Swanning County's making a difference, so, he said a few other things as well, I won't say everything he said, but, um...
He told me he thought it was me.
So, is, did he say he was approving funding for one hundred and eighty-fourth Street?
We didn't get that part. I, I want to end the conversation.
Two fifty's first, buddy.
Eighty, terrorist.
He did that one too. So, as you can tell, we got wheels spurred. Anything else? Anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
One other thing, we've been kicking around, uh, with administration for the past year about being more efficient and, um, we are, we're through a process of looking at the functions of staff that we have now, um, we've got two positions that are open now, one that will be open, uh, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm sure we have, uh, Mr. Wayne Wright, who's taking another job in, uh, Jacksonville, and, uh, he'll leave us in about a month or so, um, so we need to deal with that position also, and Kenny was, left us, you know, we need to deal with that position too, so, looking at kind of the job responsibility each of those guys had, what does that need to look like in the future, all good, what I would like to do, I'll say, me, is, is do a separation between public works and administration, uh, I think we'd be more efficient, I think we'd be more effective to the community and more receptive to the citizens, um, take administration back downtown and, uh, be fellow works there, Ms. Brenda has just blossomed into, I realize the welcome knowledge that she had, uh, but , uh, we've heard there with the new two hires to take care of the day-to-day operations at public works, um, sort of project managing and, and such, but, um, I think we can be more efficient, you know, for the law, but, just, uh, I'd give a nod of, of go ahead with that, I mean, we do have, uh, work in progress, but, um, I think we'll be more efficient.
You got a timeline on that?
Um, depends on getting the hires in, you know, that's going to take a month or so, uh, we're probably getting two months before we can make that happen.
All the, all the new hires for the, for the public, you do, both of those positions posted online for applications?
Yes.
Or Miss, Miss Pennington's here enough, they can see.
We, we have, we have other position of it also, I encourage, we've got friends that understand what work's all about, to send them our light, uh, we, we, uh, we attract the drivers desperately.
Against the big shoes of field that we can find.
We got a lot of folks that, uh, and it's been good workers and, uh, Aaron started doing, pulling load by himself, so, uh, he needs, he needs help out there, right?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Mr. Scott, I, I, I just want to say I agree with what you're doing there, I think that's, I've been, after that since, uh, pretty much as I've been on the board, I think admin should be back uptown and public work should be at public works and I think it'd be much more efficient that way and, or admin, admin to be uptown where people, where you're accessible with people, I think is just a terrific idea and I, I totally agree, appreciate that.
Yes, sir, I, I would, I mean, I know what the other three guys would say as well, but I, I mean, I'm definitely in support of it, if, if it doesn't work out, if we find something different or it's not what we thought, we can always go back to the way we were, but I think that having that, keeping that synergy downtown and that accessibility for people, I mean, that one-stop shop, you know, you, you got your tax collector, property frasier supervisor, and, you know, your, your building department, um, and anybody that wants to waste thirty minutes to talk to Jimmy, all that's in one stop.
Hurt.
Hurt, hurt, you're going to hurt. I was being sarcastic on the time, probably, you know, the guy likes to talk, but, uh, anyway, having all that downtown, I think will really be a benefit and a convenience for people. So, I'm in support of that. I don't disagree, I've often been asked why I was without them, you know, of course, I would. So, I'm in support of it, uh, hopefully you got the funding and can get the IT and all the wires and everything on this, you know, I know that there's plenty of off-space upstairs, up there, both the building department, that, it's probably underutilized, so...
Yeah, IT's almost great to do, so...
Oh, is that all you have, because I got a question?
Just one, just one more, one more comment, um, really proud of the staff, we had a gentleman that worked for the county for about fifteen years, Sam Mann, passed away, one of our tractor operators, um, just a really good guy and, uh, I was touched by the way the, the staff kind of came together and, uh, wanted to be part of, of that service, um, uh, we had one gentleman that, uh, as we had the talent, he's got, uh, but, uh, he spoke and sang and, uh, just, uh, just a guy that, you know, you don't know we got talent, but we do, but, um, we, you know, just watching the talent grow and mature, um, employees grow and mature has been pretty cool to watch the past year or so, we, we, we're probably guys and gals that took the job for something.
Amen. So, ours go out to the Van family as well.
Exactly.
Um, my question for you, not to put you on the spot, but, um, County Road one thirty-six, striping, have those bids, official numbers come back?
We, we got...
So, ninety-five, one thirty-two?
That process, that process is already in place.
Fine, I know, we were waiting.
Hey, hey, hey.
Mike, Mike, that's true, and, uh, evaluated all the roads and that process is in place now.
Fantastic. Um, that's all I have, anybody have any questions for Mr. Scott?
I, I want to bring up one, Mr. Chairman, uh, I was contacted this week about these garbage stickers and, we got to have the garbage stickers, I don't disagree with that, is it, what is the board's opinion on somebody, and it was brought to my attention today, that if they took a picture and put it on their phone of that sticker, is that, is that something that'll work or not?
I'll go take picture of my sticker and I'll have it stick.
Well, I mean, if you show your ID and the sticker, I mean, I don't know, it's just, it's, I've had three or four complaints about it, I don't know if it's one person working at a garbage collection site that's creating an issue, I don't know what the issue is, but I've had three complaints on it this week and so, I don't know, I was just, you know, somebody brought it to my attention, I said, well, I'll bring it before the board and we'll see what they say.
Some, some, well, some of the other, some of the other counties, uh, we've got, they've got, like a flocker and then they have a, it almost looks like your driver's, it's a little laminated car you can keep in your wallet, you know, because you usually go have your wallet, and, uh, what vehicle you're in or whatever.
Well, that seems to be the issue, is multiple vehicles not having another vehicle that are going to the garbage side end, or they got kids and the kids don't, you only have two stickers and the kid doesn't have a sticker and it's, it's several scenarios where they didn't have a sticker and, and I, hats off to our employees, that's what they're supposed to have to get in their garbage while we're done, but I'm just, I just want to see if there's any other options available to make this easier.
Let us stretch our heads a little. Yeah, I think on the phone, it sounds good in theory, but, yeah, I...
I can see where you could do that.
We, we saw, we saw some stickers on, uh, eBay or somewhere where somebody was making themself.
Well, it's kind of like the laminated card thing.
It, it worked good and, and actually, when I was speaking in Madison County the other day, um, they, they pointed out, they have my old car, it was like, I'm sorry, a piss in your wallet, it's basically the same thing, it's those you address, okay, my only, my best answer is that they address.
Well, my, my only concern would be is, is twofold, is one, we, we did the stickers to try to reduce the garbage that we were getting from folks that weren't helping pay for it, whether they be outside of county or, or, you know, non-county residents, I'll leave it at that, so, you know, we caused a little bit of criticism, but there was a lot of support for it. Now, if someone comes on there and they are one of our, our citizens and they are, they have displaced their sticker, or they do have four vehicles and they're riding the wrong one, I mean, I don't want to discourage that person to be able to, to dump their garbage, you know, but how we navigate that, facilitate, facilitate that, keep it cost, that, that sticker issue program cost-effective, because it gets expensive sending their stickers out every year, I mean, we save money, we looked at the numbers, we saved a hundred and thirty, thirty-two or a hundred and forty, a hundred, a hundred-plus thousand and it costs us twenty-five to send the stickers out, so we're still netting, that's the garbage that, you know, that we did not collect and we were having to pay for before, before we implemented the stickers, we implemented the stickers and our garbage fee with Waste Management went down a hundred-plus thousand dollars because we kicked out a bunch of garbage that we were paying for the white irons, um, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, that's why I want to bring it up, I just want, I just want to think through it and see if there's any other options available, if there's not, we'll stick with what we got, but I am in no way saying that we don't need those garbage stickers, because I thought we get those things and, so, I'm just wanting to see if there's an easier way, a different way, that's all.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, just, there wouldn't be any legal issue if somebody applied for additional ones and they said, here's the vehicles that are registered to me at that address, and then that's a perfectly documentable reason to give somebody more stickers.
So, maybe we just, Mr. Scott may need to, you know, when we hear about those situations of, hey, call the county office, take your registrations down there, you can get multiple stickers free of charge for how many registered vehicles.
Or whatever the cost of...
The cost of the stickers is above two, which is...
And then we would just need to talk to you.
Just something I want to bring up, if that there had not opened lights on, just wanted to have a discussion.
If anybody's got other ideas along the way.
Anybody in the public got a comment on that? Yes, sir. Yeah, name and address for the record, come to the podium, please, their, their video and so...
Richard Snyder's, twenty-ninth Road, Ranford, Florida, I like the idea of, of if you have registered vehicles, you supply to get another decal, you stick it on there, because otherwise it's either decals or the laminated card, it's just something shuffling around, and if they're not registered in the local county, then you don't, they don't deserve to be going in there.
Right. Thank you, sir, Ms. Sue.
Nancy Seal, same address, uh, our garbage, our trash collection people at Dowling Park are awesome, they know us, I have been in a car that was a rental while I was in between buying a car and I pulled in, I didn't have the sticker, and they know me, and so it was not an issue, and I just, I have to say, we have awesome folks out there, and so they, you know, there are occasional issues that you might be taking someone in their car.
Right.
And, but because of the familiarity of them with us, they, they know there are exceptions.
Hundred percent, there's always exceptions.
So, I just commend our folks, plus it takes them cookies too, so that...
That's why they... I'm going to have to try that if I'm going to...
Kindness helps, that's what I think.
Believe it or not, I got asked the other day, where's your sticker?
You know what? I don't wear that.
There it is, fell off.
I'm kind of like the same as you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, like with, we, also with, uh, Commissioner White, I think if you have something laminated to give it, that, that could pass on to the child that you live there now, you know, when they trash off, uh, it's a little card, please stick it there, uh, maybe down, maybe help the car, you know?
Don't pull me to it, but I think that those counties are even offering, you know, when you get your tag, you can get a one-year or two-year, I think they're offering a multiple year lock-in at that rate, if you went and paid for multiple years on that as well.
What, what county, what does have Mr. Scott call that county?
Addison and Tewa, I believe, both.
So, maybe reach out to those two counties and see what vendor they're using and how they're doing their programs, so we can try to make it smoother, cleaner, easier, so... Anybody else for Mr. Scott? Closing comments, board members, we'll start, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Mobley, you want to go?
I appreciate everybody's coming, remember to keep, uh, say, John...
I appreciate everybody's coming. Remember to keep St. John's in your prayers and Mr. Earl Mills passed away this year. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Commissioner Mobley, Mr. Perkins?
Oh, just grateful that all the services come in today, you know, at the meeting, we do appreciate y'all coming in and, you know, whether happy to take what you say, uh, to Harvard or just passing over. I believe in it. I take it and I'm sure they do. Thank you. Commissioner Fleming being here in Miami with us and thank for all the help from our departments. Help us out to keep our, you know, county work and be here, give us support. It's all been hard work. The other hand, a couple to come out to do some things out there that was down on the spot and call you up to, you know, Jean, they, they're there. So we'll appreciate all your help and especially ladies and all of the, the gentlemen back here. And I want to, I need to thank you all so, Andy and just goodness in all y'all. And it's great to share with them what they do, what's helping us out. And like Mr. Daniel, taking up the, the chamber, doing an awesome job out there and giving to a couple of ceremonies, a little cutting and very good, showcase little business that come in and bring a smile and bring a little business in. So be sure of that. And Mr. Self also passed, uh, he was former member, Dave Self, former member of the county, he passed as well. To all the mothers, we want to see y'all on Mother's Day, but wish y'all Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Hill?
Yep. First of all, keep Mr. Bart in your prayers. Yep, just, just to turn off my house bill. He's having a pretty rough day. Big thank you to our employees. I say this all the time. They make us look good. They're the ones out there doing the hard work and we appreciate that. Under the storm, I don't even know if we caught up from that. I mean, a lot of them still struggling to get their apartments caught up and I know they're working tirelessly to do so. Ms. Brenda, I want to thank you for going out there and meeting with me on the edge of the road after hours with people from the district that were concerned about a road issue. Hurry and Ryan from Florida were very helpful to me and to the citizens of explaining it and making sure everyone understands the project and what's going on. I thank you for that. Thank you, looking forward, for inviting us to the Voters League banquet. That was a, that was a great, them boys could sing, I'm telling you. I felt like I was in church a few times there, I really did. So it was pretty amazing. A few of us up here, so. And only other thing I try to say is every meeting is, folks, you don't know who's going through what besides you, behind you, around you. Keep everyone in your prayers. Be nice to each other. Do what's right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner White?
Well, Mr. Sam Van, I enjoyed, enjoyed him. He was, he was the county employee that passed away, worked for us for sixteen years. He was sixty years old. And just a super nice guy, always smiling, always helpful. And went down to his funeral with the rest of the guys that was from that end of the county and I don't know, maybe just a few more. And Sheriff Lamb from Lafayette County was there as well. And I can see why he drove all the way to Chiefland to go to church. Super nice church. I mean, just super service and great family and we're gonna miss him. And I just want to put that out there. Sheriff, condolences for you as well. Sorry I couldn't make the funeral on Friday. They had me in Tallahassee.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Our thoughts go with you.
Thank you.
A big thank you to Mr. Greg Scott. The, the school in Branford's building a new welding shop down there and they needed some field dirt all and Mr. Scott made that happen for the school down in Branford. So and for Jean, for, he was able to pave the road to get it done. So a big, a big thank you to those guys and to you as well for making that happen.
Thanks, sir. Just to echo all y'all's comments, I mean, we got some, some key folks in the community that have lost some family members, so Mr. Mayo and Mr. Clark, Mr. Earl, Mr. Sam Van, I mean, the list goes on, but really good people. It's never good to lose a family member, so pray for those folks and ask the Lord to bless them and get them through those tough times. Our staff, we all compliment them, but I mean, we can't do what we do without them. I think Commissioner Fleming, I see him nodding, he knows how important good staff is and hats off to our staff that works for the county. Works for you guys. I mean, they're your staff too. You know, so thank y'all for what y'all do. I don't want to call your names because I'll miss somebody if I don't have y'all here. But I think that's about it. Did I, did we miss anything?
I mean, if I'm sure we, Commissioner Fleming wants to come work for free and help us with some of these projects he's familiar with.
You gotta change your shirt first. No way. No, but thank all y'all for coming. I mean, we're not perfect. All of us, all of us, I say this all the time, we all put our pants on just like you do, one leg at a time. So anytime we get feedback or see support or, or lack thereof sometimes, I mean, we fumble the football too. So thank y'all for coming and being involved and that's all I got. Yes, sir.
Well, he's gone now, but he was here and now it's all gonna be a concern for the community, but he was taking some jobs in and jumped out some jobs coming in. That was Mr. Wayne White, John Wayne White, since the thing was coming in. It took that little profit out here and turned it to a dead, um, down great profit, a profit to a great profit in all those bits we got coming out there, you know, on that profit. So we do appreciate you in there. Seeing a few things that you're doing out there. So looking forward to seeing the thing happen in the future that, you know, some of these investments are putting out there with I-ten, one twenty-nine, four doors.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. I think that's it, guys. All I need to mention to a turn. The motion about Commissioner White, second bump, Commissioner Perkins, all in favor? Ah, all in the same zone.